Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator/Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator/Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning. Good morning and welcome. It is Tuesday, February 6, 2018. It is 8:30. We are starting the Finance and Physical Resource Committee meeting. I'd like to welcome staff and guests who come today. Thank you very much for attending. Like to see everyone in the audience. So we will start with public comment. Is there any public that would like to address the Finance and Physical Resources Committee meeting this morning? Okay. Seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll go to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions or comments or anything that needs to be pulled?
You've got lots on the consent agenda. Nope.
All right. All those in favor of passing the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That takes us to item three, Fiscal Services. 2017 Sheriff Budget Amendment, Distribution of Available Laps.
Yes, this is a request to recommend to the Board to approve a transfer of up to $850,000 to the 2017 sheriff budget from the 2017 general fund budget lapse. Sheriff's 2017 general fund budget appropriation is $60,956,000. It's estimated that the actual expense for 2017 will not exceed $61,806,000. The budget shortfall results from the extra week of payroll, approximately $900,000 accrued to the 2017 budget to amend the payroll schedule. It's requested that up to $850,000 be transferred to the sheriff's 2017 general fund budget from the 2017 general fund budget lapse.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion. Yes, Commissioner Mads.
Thank you, Chair. Are there other departments that have the same thing? Why is the sheriff only?
We will have one more that will be coming for the, well, two more actually, this year.
Okay. The same deal. The same deal. We have one extra payroll, one extra.
No, no. This is the only one with the extra payroll related to the payroll. But there will be two others, the medical examiner and corporate extension that will be also on your agenda this morning.
But why does the sheriff have the extra week of payroll versus the other departments?
Good question. What do we have Steve Duarte from Fiscal Services come up and answer that? It's a little bit complicated, but we'll explain.
Good morning, Steve from Fiscal Services.
Good morning. How's it going today? The question was why the sheriff?
Yeah. Why is that the only department?
Doing an analysis of their budget this year. Once we accrued this payroll, there were not sufficient lapse funds in there. I haven't, while I normally would have expected it to be enough, last year looks like an atypical year. I haven't had a chance to sit down with the sheriff's command yet and talk about what went on, whether there was something unusual that happened last year, whether this is going to be the new normal. We will be holding those discussions in the not-too-distant future.
Okay. Commissioner Mokowski.
Well, this lapse, I mean, the other one was pretty small. But will it have an impact on our overall bottom line for the fiscal year in the sense that, you know, we budget for a significant lapse and there was no lapse in this significant department? And then we have to find other departments' laps to cover this? And so, at the end of the day, are we going to end the year deficit?
That's, that, two important questions I will ask or answer for you, one you've just asked, the other one. Will we in fact use more money than was originally appropriated by the Board of Commissioners? The answer is no. Will we have a deficit in 2017? The answer is no.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Steve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. That takes us to item four from the Health Department. City of Grand Rapids-led Hazard Control Community Development Grant for 2018. Wayman.
Okay. This is a request to approve, accept, and appropriate $44,975 in funding from the City of Grand Rapids to the 2018 Health Fund Budget and authorize Board Chair to execute, or designate to execute, the grant agreement and approve grant extensions and changes within 15% of the original award. The City of Grand Rapids has made $44,975,000 available in funding for the Health Department to be a partner in the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services-led Hazard Control Grant. This grant replaces funding from the current Housing and Urban Development Grant received by the Health Department via Grand Rapids. The objective of the grant is to remediate lead paint hazards in pre-1978 housing and to reduce elevated blood levels in young children. The Health Department will assist property owners with the application process, generate community awareness of lead issues, and coordinate blood level testing of children. To complete the grant requirements, a .5 FTE public health nurse position is required, and the funding for the current public health nurse will transition from HUD grant to the Michigan Department of Health and Services grant. Total cost of the position is $22,548. The grant will also support .05 FTE of an existing CLRT II position, as well as a .075 FTE of an existing public health program supervisor position. Total costs of salaries and benefits for these positions is $6,136. The remaining $16,291 will be used to support operating costs of supplies, travel, interpretive services, and overhead. The grant term is March 1, 2018 through September 30, 2018.
Thank you, Wayman. Is there a motion to support?
So moved.
And supported. Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments, and discussion. Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. That brings us to item number five, Kent County Community Action, LIHEAP appropriation.
LIHEAP. Yes, this is a recommendation to the Board to accept and appropriate $458,755 in grant funds from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services contingent upon execution of a grant and to authorize Board Chair or Designee to execute the grant agreement and approve grant extensions and changes within 15% of the original award. Kent County Community Action has been notified that it has been awarded the following grants: LIHEAP Crisis Assistance Amount of totaling $198,100. LIHEAP Weatherization Assistance Program totaling $260,655. The Kent County Community Action operated these grants successfully when it was a part of Area Community Service Employment and Training Agency. The LIHEAP Crisis Assistance Program provides energy assistance to low-income clients for deliverable fuels according to the grant requirements. The LIHEAP Weatherization Assistance Program works with the Department of Energy and Senior Milage Funds to expand weatherization services to low-income clients in Kent County.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And supported or supported? Okay. Questions, comments, and discussion. Yes, Commissioner Mokowski.
Yeah. With the LIHEAP dollars, in recent past, there seemed to be the contingency and/or the elimination of these dollars. And so, do we have, A, like, what's the source of these dollars? The Department of Health and Human Services seems to take credit for it, but isn't it, you know, like, we all kick into a pot via Consumers DT and others? Like, so what's the original source of these dollars?
These are federal dollars right now. And we have received notification of these amounts, but it's contingent upon release of the funds. So the continuing resolutions are what's been, the feds have notification, but they haven't released the funds to us. So we're trying to be prepared so when the release does come, we know the amount, we know a contract number and all that, we'll be able to execute the grant agreement and then be able to spend the funds. Challenge is if you don't, if you don't have your ducks in a row to get through the process and the timeframes and 9:30, you'll lapse the money otherwise, so.
With that, so is it federal general fund or is it, is it some fees that we're paying or is it?
To my knowledge, these aren't fee-based from Detroit Energy or consumers that you might see on your bill slightly to go into a pot. These are direct federal dollars that are appropriated through the Congress.
Okay. And then last, not to make work for you, but do you have a chart of like the last five or 10 years to see what the trend is of these dollars?
I would need to work with the department to get that, but it's totally easily done. We can do that.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Matthew. I was just wondering how we come about, how we pick the recipients of some of this money for the weatherization system program, how that works?
Yeah. So there's an application process and it's income-dependent. And so, if people are means tests and they're within the cap, they'd be eligible. And there's different co-pays depending on whether somebody's a senior, whether somebody's living in a rental unit, or whether they're a homeowner. So there's a policy at the department that they follow.
They do have caps, too. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Hennessy.
Do you allow these to be used for rental units, then?
There is a program that allows for rental units, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Matthew. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. We'll go to item six, Kent County Community Action. Wayman.
Yes, this is a request to accept and appropriate $18,400 in grant funds from Michigan Community Action Consumer Discretionary Program and to authorize Board Chair or Designee to execute the grant agreement and approve grant extensions and changes within 15% of the original award. Kent County Community Action has been awarded funding from Michigan Community Action Consumers' Discretionary Program to provide financial assistance to its electric customers with shut-off notices. Kent County Community Action operated this grant successfully when it was a part of Area Community Service Employment and Training Agency. The term of the grant is January 1, 2018 to September 30, 2018.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
You, support?
Support.
Thank you. Questions, comments, and discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That'll take us to item seven from the Medical Examiner, the 2017 Medical Examiner Budget Amendment. Wayman.
Yes, this is a request to approve a transfer of up to $350,000 to the 2017 Medical Examiner General Fund Budget from the 2017 General Fund Budget Lapse. The Medical Examiner's Office provides forensic investigation of all suspicious deaths, as well as all deaths that take place unexpectedly or without the attendance of a physician. Activities include autopsies, establishment of the cause and manner of death, death scene investigations, and court testimony. The Medical Examiner's 2017 General Fund Budget appropriation is $1,378,498. It is estimated that the actual medical examiner expenses for 2017 will not exceed The budget shortfall results from the Medical Examiner's 2017 budget, including 330 autopsies, while the actual number of autopsies performed was 410, and Spectrum Health increasing facility fees mid-year. It is requested that up to $350,000 be transferred to the Medical Examiner's General Fund Budget from the 2017 General Fund Budget Lapse.
Here, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion. Yes, Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Chair Jones. With the sheriff, what was about a 15%, I think, boost. This one here is like 20%. You know, when you, when you have such an influx in cash like that, have we looked at? I'm just always concerned when all of a sudden you have an infusion of that kind of cash dollars, whether or not we're getting the best bang for it, but it's going on.
Well, in this particular case, we have been involved with the Health Department and the Medical Examiner, examining our relationship with Spectrum Health, hoping that we can reduce the overall expense of autopsies and expense to carry out that work. We visited Washington County and Ann Arbor University of Michigan Hospital, looking at their approach to providing this service. And so, we're, we're attempting to reduce the cost that we incur with this program. Unfortunately, we're in a position where we can't control Spectrum Health and their, and their need to increase their cost. The other issue is related to the opioid death increases. We have seen a tremendous number of deaths that have occurred resulted from opioid-related issues. Adam Lund can probably tell you more about that, or Dr. Hall, but it is, it is something that we had not planned for. And so, when these things come up, we luckily have planned for laps and can utilize the laps to take care of it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mokowski.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, it is about a 25% increase in the number of autopsies based on what we, or actually what the coroner projected and the Health Department projected and what actually were performed. That being said, I mean, I've heard secondhand about significant delays and how it's impacting families because of, again, all the opioid deaths have to be done with an autopsy. Last year, when the coroner was here, you know, in his, I had my LHR hat on, you know, he talked about, you know, just the toxology screens and how much time and expense with all that stuff. So, I mean, definitely, we have to pay last year's bills, so there's no issue with that at this time. But what are we, I mean, are we doing some more significant planning for 2018? Because, I mean, what's in the budget and what's, what's going to happen there?
We'll have Marvin Van Norwood.
And as Marvin comes up, the other concern is succession within that department because Dr. Paul noted that, that he's not getting any younger and he's looking forward to his retirement, which I don't know when it's going to be, but that's another significant expense because he's probably quicker than his replacement will be.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking.
Those are things we have to concern ourselves with, absolutely.
Morning. Just to put this in perspective a little bit, the five-year average from 2012 to 2016 was 322 autopsies.
Right.
So, and we planned for 330, as it says, and we ended up for 10. And for 2018, the plan was 350. So, with things that are going, we will probably be back here again next year if it continues at this rate. Dr. Cole planned to be here this, this morning, but he had a number of cases come in yesterday and he estimated three of those were, will be at overdoses. So, it's a sign of the times, I think.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on Commissioner Mokowski. It went up almost 25 to 30%. So, we're looking at that. But since there was a mid-year correction in fees or increase in fees, how much was that? Do we have any idea?
That was a 66% increase. It went up from $1,023 per autopsy to $1,700 per autopsy. So we got.
Get pretty expensive to tie, I guess.
Yeah. And we fought them to the nail to try to get that changed, to try to back them off of that. We, we worked diligently trying to get them to change that.
Just trying to get, I don't think we're going to get back to the 222 per year, you know, anytime soon, so.
So, we'll, we'll keep this all under our discussion when we plan budget for this 2019 year as well. So, just, we, one of the things we'll have to take into consideration when we go through the process of budgeting for 2019.
Commissioner Antor.
Out of the 300, roughly $350,000 increase this year, what percentage of that was due to the Spectrum Health increases?
It's a good question. It's hard to tell because it was a mid-year increase. We're not sure how many of the autopsies were performed prior to the increase and how many were performed after. So we don't really have a good handle on that.
Give like a ballpark, like it's a 70, 30, 70?
I would say maybe 60%.
60, close 60. Really? Just from the increase in the spectrum?
Well, what I said was, I guess, 60% of the autopsies were after the rate was adjusted.
Okay. Thank you.
Just based on timing.
You know, when, when the doctor, Cole. Cole. I've got a cold. Taking meds. But anyway, when Dr. Cole comes back for his presentation in front of the Board this year, he can get into the details of this further. He makes a presentation each year, so we'll hear more from that.
Yeah, he does a pretty good job presenting.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Marvin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That takes us to item eight, from the sheriff to accept a state homeland security grant and a budget amendment. Wayman.
Yes, this is a request to appropriate $339,317 from the Michigan Department of State Police to the 2017-18 sheriff emergency management budget, special projects fund, contingent upon award and execution of the agreement, and to authorize the Chair or Designee to sign the agreement and approve extensions and changes within 15%. The Michigan Department of State Police Emergency Management Homeland Security Division provides federal pass-through funds for homeland security programs. The purpose of the fiscal year 2017 Homeland Security Grant Program is to prevent, deter, respond to, and recover from incidents of national significance, including but not limited to threats and incidents of terrorism. Starting with the grant year 2006, the Homeland Security Grant funding allotments were allocated on a regional basis. Kent County was placed into Region 6, which is part of a 13-county region. The fiduciary for the grant since 2006 has been the West Michigan Shoreline Regional Development Commission. The Regional Development Commission has agreed to continue as the fiduciary for the grant. The WMSRDC agreement will be reviewed and approved by Corporate Counsel. The grant period is September 1, 2017 to May 31, 2020. So moved.
Moved and, is there support? Questions, comments, and discussion. Yes, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you. I was just curious as to this $340,000, if the county is all pigeonholed on how they can spend that money within the confines of Homeland Security? Is there?
Jack Stewart is your answer.
Do they put limitations on it, or do they allow you to choose what you think is the best for this area?
Well, every, every year, we have grant guidance. And the Homeland Security Grants come along with the allowed projects. And the last few years, a big push in Kent County has been for communications-related projects. And also, we're very active in the Cyber Security Consortium. We started that here in Kent County. Now, we're over 700 members. The state have joined us. The feds are on board with us. And it's something that we did right here locally, and it's huge. Our RACI's team, some of the money goes to our backup communications, 800-meg radios plus other enhancements for our communication system overall.
Okay. I've just seen in the past where other programs like Community Development Lock Grant money kind of pigeonhole you on how you can spend it. You may spend it on things you don't really need, just, you don't have that problem.
No, we don't. Because, you know, the communications, we passed the milage a couple of years ago, and there are still enhancements to that.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy.
The funding is allocated on between 13 counties in this regional type of consortium here. Are we getting our fair share?
We are. Kent County gets over 26% of the, of the overall budget.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. That brings us to item number nine for miscellaneous. Is there any Commissioner miscellaneous? Yes, Commissioner Milton.
Thank you, Chair. I actually have a couple, something that is good and something that is bad. I just hope that we will all keep the Dubaiya family in our prayers and in our thoughts. They're the family from Kentwood, whose daughter went missing and was dead in the city of Kalamazoo. She was walking out to the bus and never arrived at two schools, so no idea what it is. Her parents are from a worn, torn area and really, of course, came here for the American dream, if you will. And you can imagine how it has shattered some of those, those dreams and whatever. She was 16 years old. So, and no grades to indicate this. I mean, unfortunately, we may never know. We're hoping, but no one has come forward. So please keep the Dubaiya family and your thoughts and prayers. I, I just can't even imagine. On to something a little bit happier. When you see Chris Becker, our prosecuting attorney, please, again, congratulate him. On Thursday, he will be honored at the Kentwood Education Foundation fundraiser for an outstanding alum. And I didn't realize how outstanding he was. I was hoping he would be here and I might embarrass him a little bit, but his former We the People teacher sent in quite a lovely little note about him. And not only did he, was he instrumental in the We the People program early on, he still helps Deb Snow in her retirement with senior citizens and donates a lot of time to help educate them about things. And the last one that I have, and it's only because I'm not going to be here the end of February, but March is Reading Month. And so, I would like to challenge each one of us 19, of course, we're not all 19 here, to find a school in our district to read to and that we all read at least one book during the month of March so that we can set an example to our schools and our students that reading is still a very cool, very exciting, and most necessary part of education and that you are never too old to be educated. So that's my, what I have to offer.
Okay. Any other miscellaneous this morning? All right. Seeing none, we will be adjourned till Tuesday, February 20. All right, seeing none, we will be adjourned until Tuesday, February 20.
I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
Ami Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.